...about vaccines and the planning that's going on in the county around distributing a vaccine once it becomes available. But let me start with our data. As you know, later this afternoon, we'll get the new county metrics from the state. These are metrics that are 10 days of delay, you know, delayed in terms of their data. But given the fact that we've been seeing a steady increase in cases, we anticipate that we will remain in purple and hold fairly steady on both our case measure and our measures of test positivity. But those again will be published later on this afternoon. As many of you know, last week, we saw an acceleration of cases that actually, at this point, amounts to a surge in our case numbers. We had four days in a row where we were over 2,000 cases. And unfortunately, we're finalizing the numbers today, but they will also again be over 2,000 cases a day. Our positivity rate has also risen over the last two weeks, and we're now averaging close to 5% test positivity. This means out of everyone tested, on average, 5% of those test results come back positive. For those of you who remember, just a month ago, our average test positivity rate was closer to 3%. And unfortunately, we started to see a slight increase in the number of people in our hospitals every day. We had been staying below 800 for weeks, and this past week, we've been above 800 just about every single day, and that continues today as well. Fortunately, our deaths numbers each day, our daily deaths, does remain relatively low. The fear we have is death is a lagging indicator. It often takes a few weeks out from the time we see increased increases in cases before we may experience the increases in deaths, and that would be most unfortunate. We have called for the general public, our wonderful residents here across the county, to rededicate themselves to doing what we know we can do well, which is protect each other with some simple actions that we all get to take every day, wearing our face coverings, keeping our distance, avoiding gatherings, particularly gatherings with people who are not in our household and who are not wearing face coverings and keeping their distance, those crowded situations. We've also urged people who have been in gatherings or in crowded situations where they weren't either wearing their own face covering and keeping distance or others weren't there keeping distance from them, that this would be the time, if you had a significant exposure in those situations, to quarantine yourself. And by all means, please take advantage of the fact that there is ample testing available and get yourself tested. When we have this many people that are infected in our county, it's very easy for transmission to happen in those situations where people are in fact crowded, not adhering to our requests to wear face coverings and to keep their distance. We'll continue to also make sure that we're paying particular attention with our compliance efforts to both get in early at work sites where there are outbreaks and make sure that we're preventing increased transmission, but also, at this point, targeting our compliance efforts where we go in proactively and actually survey businesses to make sure they're in compliance with the health protocols to those communities that are seeing themselves an increase in their case rates. This past weekend and this upcoming week, we've targeted 15 communities for enhanced compliance checks because they have accelerating rates of transmission. And we're also asking that our community health workers, we have about 60 community health workers that are out in the field right now, that they also prioritize work in those communities. They're really there to support residents and to give residents good information about how they can take care of themselves and the people they love, but they're also there to provide information on the importance of isolating and quarantining. We're training an additional 170 health workers from 15 partner agencies, and they hopefully will join our teams in these hardest-hit communities over the next couple of weeks. Looking into the future, there should be about 500 additional community health workers that are assigned to work, again, using high-priority block groups and working through our wonderful community partner organizations. So that's our focus. We're going to ask everyone to help with that focus. It's really time to get back to what we know we can do here in LA County, which is slowing the spread. If we don't slow the spread now, we're headed into a very unfortunate holiday season because we really could easily end up in situations where we're taxing our healthcare system by this continued growth in the number of cases. So ask everyone to help us so that that is not the worry over the holidays. The second update I wanted to provide is on our schools. And here again, we are running two efforts across the county as a Tier 1 county. All of our schools are eligible to reopen for services for high-need students. We ask that schools notify us, and through that notification process, we do a site visit at every school that's reopening. To date, there's 1,565 schools that have either reopened or are planning to reopen. About 250 of those schools are planning to reopen either later on in the month of November or delaying the reopenings until January. The total number of students that are back on our campuses is about 75,000, and there's about 31,000 staff that are supporting those students. 73% of the schools that are open for high-need students are public schools, 15% are charter schools, and 11% are private schools. To date, we've visited and conducted inspections at over 900 schools that have reopened and have students on their campuses. We've also received a total of 233 waiver applications. We've approved 74 applications, we being us and the state. There are 60 waiver applications in the pipeline for approval. I also want to note that the cap has been lifted in the county from 30 schools being approved a week to 50 schools a week. Currently, there's 8,000 students back on campuses through the waiver program and about 1,600 staff. Again, that number will grow, and we anticipate with lifting the cap that most schools that actually are able to reopen adhering to our safety protocols and the attestations that are required through the waiver program should be granted approvals over the next three weeks. I wanted to also notice, note that out of all the 1,500 schools that are open, we only have documented 10 outbreaks at school sites. In each of those outbreaks, with one exception, there are only three to four cases. These are very small case numbers. I think the system to date is working well. This is a partnership between the schools, the school's administration, and the Department of Public Health. We are notified with every positive case at a school, and in fact, in most schools, what you're just seeing is one case or two cases. There are nine schools that only have three to four cases. There's one exception to this, and it really is a school where there's nine associated cases, but these are associated with a baseball team that in fact traveled to Arizona and not with activities that happened while students were in the school building or on the school campus. We've also been working through focus groups and telebriefings on getting input from parents, teachers, and staff and administrators. Also, this is a task that we do in collaboration with the LA County Office of Education and Dr. Duarte, and I want to thank her entire team for all the work that they're doing to really design proposals that make sense for the reopening sequences once we reach Tier 2. As you know, while we're in Tier 1, we have limited options, but in Tier 2, we will have other options available to bring back many more students onto our campuses, and we've been working to solicit really wise counsel from the many people that make up the school community. And last, I wanted to close with some just updated information on vaccination planning here in the county. I know with the recent announcements about the early evidence of possible vaccine efficacy with the Pfizer vaccine, we're all very excited about the possibilities to come. I want to provide a little bit of context. There's currently over 300 vaccines that are in development globally, and there are 35 candidate vaccines that are in clinical evaluation, four of which, in addition to Pfizer, have enrolled tens of thousands of patients in their vaccine trials. It's still early. I want to note that even Pfizer is not ready yet to apply to the FDA for their emergency authorization, and if that vaccine gets a green light, we should all understand that there will be a scarce supply in the initial months. The Pfizer vaccine is also doing additional studies to make sure that this, like any other vaccine that gets distributed, is safe, and they will be looking at what they're called two months of post-vaccination safety data in order to make sure that they've got good information about any adverse effects from the vaccine. There's still some questions that need to get answered, whether this vaccine would work for everyone, how long the immune response will last from this vaccine, or these are really questions for every vaccine that's in trial. What the FDA outside advisors are going to think as these applications get processed, the FDA has set up an advisor task force. And then there's the issues that we're most interested in, I think, in all of the jurisdictions across the country, is what is the distribution plan going to look like? The federal, state, and local health departments are all working together to agree upon the prioritization of the vaccination distribution, and as everyone has heard, high priority will be given, of course, to first responders, healthcare workers, and those most vulnerable. You know, Pfizer has a commitment with the United States, I think, to produce about 100 million doses in the United States. But to put that in context, this is a two-dose vaccine, so here in LA County, to vaccinate everybody in LA County, would take us more than 20 million doses. So there is going to be a production issue that we're all going to face. I ask everyone to be patient. We will absolutely be ready to distribute as soon as we have vaccine to distribute, but in the meantime, we're going to need to continue wearing our face coverings and keeping our distance because for most of us, it will be a few months out before there will be vaccine distribution for the general public here as in other places across the country. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and again, want to thank the board for their tremendous leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Fer. Dr. Galley, do you have anything to add as it relates to the hospitalization numbers?
Yes, good morning, supervisors. I do want to echo Dr. Ferrer's comments. We are seeing a slight uptick in the hospitalizations across the county with them running in the low to mid-800s. This is an increase over the prior couple of weeks, and while it's still far below the peak that we saw earlier this year in May when it was around 1,600 and in July when it was above 2,000, it still reflects an increase. And one of the things that we've learned throughout this pandemic is how quickly those hospitalizations can increase over time. Hospitalizations still are a lagging indicator, so they would typically not see the true rate of increase in the hospitalizations for two to three weeks or so after the initial uptick in cases. But the slight trend that we've seen over the past week or so is notable. Hospitals are prepared, they've had lots of time to prepare, and are used to being able to manage still a much higher volume of COVID patients than what they experience now, but it's something to keep a watchful eye on, and I think just worth reinforcing with the broader public, the importance of following all of those basic public health measures so that we can help protect the health of the community as well as safeguard the resources in our hospitals across the county for those who need them, whether it's for COVID-related illnesses or non-COVID-related illnesses or injuries. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Ferr, I just have one question as it relates to, I think we're getting an echo. If everyone could put their mics on mute, that would help. Dr. Ferr, I noticed this morning that there were numbers given on the news that showed different areas in the county where the outbreak is up. I think the Coima, Sun Valley, and the Antelope Valley were the top three. Are you going to start providing breakdowns geographically by each district so that we can get a better understanding in terms of where the outbreaks are focused and what educational programs are we going to put into place to educate in those regions?
Yeah, that's a great question. This is a reminder, we publish data every day on our dashboard for every sort of community, city, jurisdiction across the entire county. What we have started, and you can look there and you can see your case rates, which is really what allows us to make comparisons from one community to another, not just the total number of cases you're seeing. What we are doing now is we are looking at the top 25 cities and communities with the highest 14-day cumulative case numbers and case rates. And yes, I'm happy to share that with the supervisors. We'll also be posting that for the public. You know, again, these communities, you can expect there'll be some shifting and moving around, and we are doing this with 14-day intervals. Obviously, we need a decent amount of time to be able to look at making sure we're seeing a real increase or a real decrease, for that to be the case. But I'm happy to share that information with the supervisors and also let the public know that we'll be posting those. We will be updating that list once a week, again, using 14-day intervals. We're doing this now in recognition of exactly what you pointed out, too, the need to make sure that we're targeting some of our resources. So as I noted earlier, one way we use this list is to target our compliance efforts, and the other way is to make sure that we are providing additional communications in those communities so that people know that they really need to take precautions. We all need to be about driving the rates down across the entire county because many of us live in one community and may work in another, or our children go to school in a different community. So we're all in this together, and it's important that we maintain a focus on driving down the county rates. But it's also important to know if you're living in a neighborhood or a community that's seeing an acceleration, you've got to take extra precautions to protect yourselves and the people you love and care about from this infection, and be extra diligent about what you're doing to protect others as well.
Okay, thank you. And then with the projected numbers that we're seeing the increase, last week you said that best-case scenario would be two weeks that would be on this tier. Now, I'm assuming now that we're probably going to be on this tier for another at least two to three weeks?
Yeah, I would say, you know, if we all started working really hard today, recommitted ourselves across the board, across the county, we have a chance, two weeks from now, to start seeing our rates go down. It's a 14-day incubation period, so we're going to need the two weeks. What we do today will affect our case numbers two weeks from now. But if we started getting back to slowing the spread two weeks from now, we would then need two weeks of data that qualifies us for Tier 2 before we actually be moved to Tier 2. I think it's possible. I've seen us drop the rate pretty significantly back in late July and early August, but it's something that every single person really needs to help with at this point. So I would say the earliest we would see this county move to Tier 2 would be four weeks from now, and that's if every single person is helping us get back to slowing the spread.
And then the last question, then Supervisor Solis has some questions, followed by Supervisor Han. As it relates to testing, are we, I know we still have a robust testing in place, but what are we seeing in terms of people going to access at our testing sites? Is it staying steady? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing in terms of the people that are showing up?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Galley on that. I'm hoping she's still on.
Yes, thanks for the question. Over the last week or two, we've seen an increase in the utilization of the county-operated testing sites. We've also seen the same trend at the state-operated testing sites such as Verily and OptumServe. And I believe the city is also seeing an uptick in their volume at the city-operated testing sites. We see that as encouraging. We have encouraged people to use the testing capacity that's available within the community. And previously, over the past month, six weeks or so, we were seeing really only about half of the available capacity be used, and now we're moving much closer to capacity, to the point where we are adding in personnel and slots and additional test kits to certain sites where they're getting increasingly close to the capacity. We have the ability to ramp that up quickly and will continue to do so if the demand for testing continues to increase. We're also looking at rolling out mobile testing options over the next two weeks, which will provide additional access points for certain individuals, including those that are mobility impaired.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Galley. Supervisor Solis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Ferrer and Dr. Galley, for that update. But I continue to be very concerned about the increases that we're seeing, particularly in low-income disadvantaged communities, and the outbreaks continue to amaze me, how large and how vast they are. If I can just share with my colleagues, in the First District, we continue to have a daily and cumulative case rate higher than any of our other districts, and the death rate is also disproportionate to other communities. As of November the 6th, the First District had 83,794 total cases, but specifically in areas like East Los Angeles that you all mentioned, with a population of 120,000 and has had more than 7,400 cases of COVID-19. Similarly, in the city of Southgate that's in the First District with a population of 94,000, more than 5,200 people there had gotten sick with COVID. And in Huntington Park, which is densely populated, a smaller community in the southeast area, population is 58,000 and over 3,362 cases. So we do need to look at how we're providing access, availability, and testing. And I know that in some testing centers, we're not at our capacity, and I really do think we have to have a more robust outreach in terms of really reaching these individuals. So I would hope that utilizing our health navigators, in particular, the prometoras, Dr. Ferrer, that we really get out there and make this a cauldron call, that people have to understand that they have to take some ownership here and work with the county and get the testing that's really needed. I do want to say that I think as we move on and we do find that we're going to have perhaps a vaccine, this leads me to also say that I would like to see that we also make available the vaccine in these particular areas where we're seeing the high numbers. So I would hope that we could look at, in addition to the schools that we're going to be voting on in a while on Item 3 that Supervisor Han has, also look at testing centers to provide the vaccine, as well as federally qualified clinics, including libraries, as well as senior centers. So those are items that I'm going to bring back as a motion, but I wanted to make that clear. I am and continue to be concerned about the numbers that go up, particularly in the workplace. And I know that we had a case in the First District that was somewhat, I want to say, alarming to me when it came to my attention, and that was the fact that there was an outbreak in the City of Industry, and the way that it was reported came to us so late, and I was wondering why and what we could do to, you know, better understand that. That was in the City of Industry, resulting in over 60 cases among 400 staff at a workplace. And I was wondering, Dr. Ferrer, if the business owner provided adequate PPE, testing services, what can we do to better help our business owners understand how severe this is and how important it is for them to comply? So those are my questions and comments. Dr. Ferrer?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Supervisor Solis, and for your leadership and all of the board supervisor's leadership, particularly on the issues around remaining focused on equity. And I do think we need to continue to focus on equity. I want to note that we have made some significant strides most recently, so we are narrowing the gaps most recently around cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. But we still see in particular Latinos, Latinas, the Latinx communities, you know, having a disproportionate burden, and we need to continue a laser focus, as you noted, about making sure that they have resources, not just for testing and access to medical care, but also for support around isolating and quarantine, and most importantly, on worker protections. So I think it is important to note that, you know, we are doing our very best, or we respond to over 2,000 complaints a week. Many of those are complaints that are generated by workers. People can obviously complain to us anonymously on our complaint line. And again, I'm going to share that number so that everyone actually knows how they can go ahead and get in touch with us. And this is an anonymous line, it's 888-700-9995. That's one strategy that we have and have put in place is, you know, if you see something, you're either a customer or a worker, you know, please, you can call us, you don't need to give us your name or any identifying information, just let us know the address and the nature of a violation, and we will have inspectors investigate that. The other thing is I want to sort of remind our businesses, most of whom are doing an excellent job, both putting in place protections for workers and customers, but also adhering to the requirement that an owner, manager, or operator of any business, if you know of three or more cases of COVID-19 among your employees within a span of 14 days, you have to report that outbreak to us at the Department of Public Health. There is a special line for reporting outbreaks, 888-397-3993. But it is a legally binding requirement. You cannot wait, as Supervisor Solis noted, to notify us when you have 25 cases or 30 cases because you have already lost control of spread in your building. And as the manufacturer knows in the City of Industry, who by the way Supervisor now has close to 100 cases associated with that outbreak, and that's amongst 400 workers, so obviously a lot of spread there, they are closed. And in part, if we see that level of acceleration and you haven't reported to us cases early enough, we are likely to need to close you while we figure out exactly how that kind of spread happened at a work site. We'd like to avoid as much as possible ever having those numbers, but that requires that business owners and operators notify us as soon as they have those reports of just three cases at their site. You know, our compliance officers are also out there just doing regular checks in sectors where we know that there have been excess reports of, you know, folks not adhering to the protocols. And, you know, we're proud to be working on a motion that the board passed to set up these public health councils so that workers can work with managers and operators on the full implementation of the safety protocols. Those safety protocols work, but in order for them to work, they have to be in place, and everyone has to adhere to them. But thank you for those questions, Supervisor Solis.
Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I think I share the concern of everybody on this seemingly second wave or surge that we see happening in LA County. It's especially disheartening because I feel like, you know, most everybody I see is wearing a mask. I see is wearing a mask. Uh, the businesses seem to be in compliance. So to see these record numbers of cases coming in, which is now threatening our, um, our hospitals and emergency rooms, uh, and ICUs is really upsetting. And I know that's got to cause you a lot of concern, Dr. Ferrer. Um, so with that in mind, I still, um, I'm going to a- ask a couple of questions, um, and, and make some comments. On the schools, um, certainly we're getting, uh, I know my office is getting angry emails from parents about how we haven't opened up the waiver to sixth grade, which is allowed by the state. Um, and they have complained that thirty waivers a week is not enough. So I understand we are expanding that from thirty to fifty. I am concerned, um, Dr. Ferrer, about your staff, as you have mentioned, sort of overworked, overtaxed, um, particularly on, as it relates to the applications of the waivers. And I mentioned this in closed session, but I want to talk about it in an open session as well. Um, and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, um, my office thinks it's a good idea if, uh, you had an online application waiver pro- uh, process. It would help both on the front end for applicants and on the back end as you submit these things to the state. And I know we talked about last time even, even the, um, e- the, um, the efficiency of the kind of application where you can't even submit it if all the fields have not been, uh, properly filled. You did mention that sometimes it wasn't that they hadn't filled something out, it was that they gave the wrong information. But I do think there were some cases where they had left certain fields blank and then it caused you to have to call them back. So that was one. And I just wanted to make sure that you're open to that, uh, working with ISD to assist you in that. Um, and again, uh, I think it was a good idea for you to reach out to DSW, not the shoe chain, but to the Death Disaster Service workers, uh, who are now not involved with the election anymore as callbacks. Cause a lot of it I, I heard from you was just frankly calling back some of these schools to get the proper information. I was hoping you would agree with that. Um, and, um, again, I think that's the main thing on the schools. And I, those are really pretty much comments and opinions. And I'm just hoping that you would be, um, amenable to doing both those things, just for your, for the workload that I know that your staff is experiencing. Um, let me talk about, um, our workplace. I, I'm getting, I'm getting emails. I'm hearing a lot of chatter about workers, uh, even our own county workers that are getting subtle pressure by some of our departments to come back into the offices to work. And as we know, until this vaccine is readily available, you know, until we have a good therapeutic drug to treat you if you, if you get this virus, it's still, you're still safer working from home. Now we know certain employees can't work from home. They're, they've, some of the jobs in the county, you do have to show up. Um, but there's been a couple of memos, uh, released, uh, that talk about safe workplaces. And I do know we need to invest in safe workplaces, but I'm concerned that focusing on creating safe workplaces sort of bypasses our overall message, which I know that you still, um, believe in, which is we're still safer at home, working from home. And I was just going to ask you, Dr. Ferrer, are you, do you feel like it's getting mixed, a mixed messages coming through to our own county workers about, um, working from home if you can versus come back to the office and we'll try to make it safe?
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, for, for that question, Supervisor Han. I, I do, um, I do first want to, you know, give a lot of credit to all the other county departments, uh, that are, you know, trying to make sure they're able to deliver essential services, needed services, uh, during a pandemic. And, and I think, you know, the challenges are so many and, and very diverse depending on, on each department. But I want to acknowledge that, uh, I feel very reassured by the both thoroughness and, um, the caution, uh, that the county team is taking in terms of addressing these very essential issues. You're absolutely right. Um, during a pandemic, if you can work at home, if you have the kind of job that allows you to telework, um, or even allows you to telework for part of the week, that's obviously safer. Um, less exposures you have, the safer you are, um, and the safer everyone else is because the less intermingling we have, uh, the less this virus is able to be transmitted. Um, so I, you know, I have remained a firm advocate, uh, across the board. And all of our protocols say this as well. Wherever possible, uh, telework should remain the number one option, uh, to protect workers. But there are so many cases where telework, uh, particularly a hundred percent telework is no longer possible.
Oh, no, I know that. I know there are cer- there are certain jobs, but I'm just thinking at those that can work from home. I'm hoping that your message will be a little bit louder in that specific area. Let me ask you about contact tracing. Uh, it's frustrating again, uh, when we see these cases going up. And we know you've, you've given us some indication of where you think, uh, folks are still, uh, contracting this virus. Um, do we have specific questions on our contact tracing interviews that can help better understand where people are getting sick?
Yes. I mean, the, the, there's, there's two issues here. Um, one is because it's a two-week incubation period. It's really hard often, uh, to pinpoint exactly where you had your exposure. It's obviously easiest when you went to a gathering or like a party and somebody else at that party came down with COVID-19. You're pretty clear, I was at this party. Uh, it's very likely because there was somebody else at this party and I was in contact with them, that I became sick from that. Or if you're at a workplace where we have an outbreak investigation going on, or there's another worker there, uh, that's, uh, that's sick and positive, uh, it's much easier for you to say, again, I was at this place. I know somebody I was in close contact with. Uh, that's been my source of exposure. For the vast majority of people that test positive, and we do ask them, there's actually three questions that they're asked to try to really figure out where they may have been exposed. One that gets at this, do you know somebody else who was positive that you were around in the last two weeks? And then a couple of other questions, uh, that are, uh, ask, ask about other places you went to, uh, where you spent more than an hour of time over the last two weeks. But because it's two weeks, it's so hard. Like most of us in the two-week period, we went to the grocery store. Maybe we went to the Dunkin' Donuts. Maybe we also went to a restaurant. Uh, maybe we also went to a gathering and we don't know anybody who was up, who was positive at those sites. And we probably went to work for some of us. Though we'll get a lot of information, but it won't, it's not easy to actually determine the source of an exposure unless you're part of an outbreak investigation, in which case, uh, we actually give you all really good information. We tell you where those outbreaks are, uh, so that you'll be able to see. And we have four hundred, uh, open outbreak investigations right now. So, you know, it's all over the place and in many different sectors. Uh, hopefully most of them end up.
But you're still, but I know you, I, I saw a chart where you laid out that you still were concerned about these backyard parties.
Yeah, because when, when we ask, when people know what the source of exposure was, gatherings is fifty-five percent. So if you can say, yeah, I know where I got infected. I know another person who was infected, or I know where I was when I got infected, fifty-five percent of people who are able to identify the source of exposure say they were at a gathering and that's where they got it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And a, and a gathering was also with Dodger celebrations and Laker celebrations. Those were also gatherings or, or gatherings specifically somebody's backyard.
Halloween, election night. I mean, we have, you know, sort of example after example, uh, where people are gathering. And, you know, the University of Southern California does a survey here, uh, in, uh, our county. And their data also indicates that there's been a significant increase in the number of people who are gathering with people outside their household. So, uh, that data's not specific to a case, but it's specific to sort of, I think, the overall sense that, you know, we're getting through this pandemic, uh, let's relax, you know, our, our guard and let's do some things we really want to do, uh, and let's, you know, hope that we don't get infected. I, I think unfortunately those gatherings are a source of infection.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And the last thing I'm, I'm going to talk about, and I also have a motion, Supervisor Solis referred to it, uh, about the, the vaccines being distributed at schools. But again, I just wanted to, um, ask you a few questions. You did touch on some. I'm excited about a vaccine being, uh, ready. I did hear on the news this morning that Pfizer was ready to apply for their emergency authorization order. I, I heard as soon as, you know, like this week. So they're looking for that. They're probably going to get it. Um, and they were talking about December being the first. But as you mentioned, this Pfizer vaccine takes two doses, which would be, yeah, if we were going to vacci- vaccinate everybody in LA County, that's twenty million, uh, vaccines. Um, are you thinking that LA County will receive some number of doses of this Pfizer vaccine before the end of the year?
Yes. If, if in fact there's, if there's a distribution before the end of the year, uh, LA County will get, uh, a small number of doses by the end of the year.
And I also understood that they would, it would be distributed based on population. So that kind of, does that put us up ahead of the class for a county?
Well, it, it, that's why I'm just saying with all certainty, if there's a distribution, LA County will get vaccine distributed. So if in fact this vaccine is ready for a limited distribution, LA County, uh, will be able to receive it. Uh, we're prepared to help distribute it. Uh, but it will be limited and it will go again, uh, in all likelihood to this, um, priority group of, as everyone would agree, health workers, first responders, and the most vulnerable.
Right. But as far as I can understand, it does come to LA County. You will be, our Department of Public Health will be the, uh, intake entity to receive the vaccine. And then you will begin to work to distribute it with different partners around the county.
Those, those, um, that distribution cycle is still to be determined by the federal government. Um, I will say that, um, the state has identified a set of hospitals, uh, that will be prepared as well, um, to get an initial dose. So it doesn't just rely on the county for distribution. Um, and that in fact, uh, Cedar Sinai, uh, is the hospital for our region, uh, that will also be participating in receiving, uh, sort of an initial, uh, step of vaccine doses.
Um, and I will, again, I, I know I have a motion and I know Supervisor Solis has a motion, uh, I don't know if today or later about, uh, possible distribution sites. But I think the fact that you've got a couple supervisors already kind of motioning, uh, your report back on vaccine distribution kind of means that we felt maybe it was too vague, your report back, and that we were looking for more specifics on your plan. Uh, it seemed a little bit like your plan was about getting a plan. Um, there was no mention of, you know, this cold storage issue, uh, that we know Pfizer has to be stored, I don't know, ninety-four degrees below zero or something. And so, and I'm sure for security reason, you're not going to want to say out loud where these cold storage places are. But I'm a little concerned, uh, that we're not, and we haven't lined up just the simple thing of the cold storage. So I'm just going to, uh, implore you, Dr. Ferrer, to, to really be ready. Um, I just don't think we can afford, uh, some lag time in knowing how we're going to distribute this vaccine. I, I, to be honest with you, was looking for a much more specific report from you on the actual plan, uh, mentioning partners by name, mentioning sites by name, mentioning storage places. Um, so, and I, you know, I know it's a tall order. I just really feel like the only way we're going to get back to some sense of normalcy, any way we're going to sort of relieve our communities of color and those who have been unemployed and businesses that have been closed, is to get this vaccine distributed as quickly as possible to the most people as possible, certainly starting with those, uh, the, the tier of who needs it the most. But I just don't want any kind of lag time, to be honest with you. People need to get this vaccine so that we can get back to the business of, uh, living. So, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. There, there will be, there's no lag time. I mean, it'd be nice if there was a federal plan because we all are dependent on understanding how the federal government plans on doing the distribution. Uh, we, uh, we're actually, uh, well regarded by our colleagues across the state, so much so that on the task force, uh, we have, uh, our, the person who heads up our, uh, vaccine planning, uh, sits on the state's task force. And that's also helpful in making sure, as Supervisor Solis and you both noted, uh, that we're taking into account the disproportionate impact, uh, that COVID-19 has had, uh, in communities of color and low-income communities. So I think we're ready, uh, as ready as we can be. A lot really does depend on how the federal government is going to distribute the vaccine. They're now contracting with a whole set of private, uh, companies, uh, including, you know, pharmacies to help with that distribution. Uh, but we haven't gotten a plan from the, from the, uh, federal government yet. And.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure we're ready.
Yes, we'll be ready.
Thank you. Supervisor Soli, I mean Supervisor Kiel.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, two comments and a follow-up question. Supervisor Solis outlined the, uh, very heavy toll that, uh, COVID has taken in her district, and I know in Mark's district as well. Uh, I was alarmed over the last month because, um, six days out of ten, as we went along, um, the, the third district had the highest number of daily new cases. And they were concentrated as, um, Dr. Ferrer mentioned, uh, one of our areas in Pacoima, in Silmar, in Van Nuys, in East Valley. Uh, you know, the, the truth is, uh, poverty doesn't exactly respect, uh, district lines as we know. And, uh, so we started, uh, buying, buy and trilingual Facebook ads in, um, in those areas specifically because you can really target them. But I think the information that we're getting out is good. I don't want to blame the people themselves. Uh, there are a lot of essential workers in those areas, as in the first and second, um, who have to go out. But, um, it is, you know, it is growing, uh, and, uh, in an alarming way. The second thing is about our county workers. I really agree, uh, with Supervisor Han. I have, uh, gained information that some of our department heads feel that their senior staff needs to come in, in order to show the flag in a way for, uh, those out in the field who don't have any choice but to be in the field. I think that is wrong-headed. And I would hope that there would be a reevaluation, uh, all the way from, uh, you know, DCA to everybody, uh, that, uh, we really don't want people in the building or in our buildings if they really don't need to be there. There's no such thing as, I've got to show the flag. Um, the third thing is about the vaccine. Supervisor Han raised the issue that I was going to raise, but I want to put it in the form of a question. Uh, first of all, I think we all realize that we're very excited about Pfizer and very excited about having a vaccine, and it could all fall apart in the next round of tests, or it could last for fourteen days and, and that's it. So, um, you know, measured, um, excitement. But it is the refrigeration that is a grave problem and one which will be basic to our ability to be able to disseminate whatever we get. Because it is my understanding, and I would ask Dr. Galley and Dr. Ferrer, it's my understanding, we do not have those kinds of, uh, freezer units that would be cold enough in our hospitals, uh, and in the usual places where you would keep vaccine for distribution. Uh, can you, um, enlighten me a little more about that?
This, this is Christina Galley. Uh, we do not have within the DHS hospitals the deep freezers that are required for the Pfizer vaccine. Some of the other vaccines don't require to be stored at such an extreme low cold temperature. Uh, and there are, we do have freezer capacity, uh, for some of the other vaccines that might potentially come onto market in the future that don't require that extreme cold storage, but we don't have that specific. that specific one.
And, uh, we're trying to, uh, uh, both secure warehouse space and, um, the, the appropriate cold storage, uh, space, uh, as we're speaking. Uh, we're working obviously with the CEO on, uh, figuring out how to purchase, uh, purchase and rent, uh, what would be needed for a central distribution site. So
But Doc, it, I, I don't know about the transit issue as well. Let's say, let's say we do, we do make, uh, some of our schools, the places where people would be, uh, immunized. Uh, there would be a transit issue and a, uh, you know, you'd have to like use it right up or something, right?
Yes, I mean,
I mean, tons of, of dry ice or something. I, I, I just think it is an essential part of the planning, and I know you know that, but I think we ought to be very realistic about it.
Yes, we are. Uh, and, and one of the issues really is looking at distribution points where you're going to be able to keep, uh, a cold chain. Um, so it, uh, unlike some other vaccines where it's much easier to distribute them, including influenza, because the requirements aren't, uh, quite so severe, uh, this will require, uh, should it be the Pfizer vaccine, this will require, uh, a lot of thoughtfulness, uh, because you, you can't, this is also a vaccine that, you know, uh, you have to use it, uh, once you take it out of the cold chain, the, the deep freeze. You can't like take it out, use a little, then put it back. So
Put it back, right.
There's a lot of, uh, thoughtfulness, uh, that needs to go into the planning. Uh, there's a good team here working with the state, uh, to figure out those logistics. It actually is something that, uh, our emergency preparedness folks train to do. Um, so we're, we are, again, you know, that will weigh into, uh, what the distribution is. And I do want to say, uh, just like Christina said, you know, there's a whole host of other vaccines that are in trial as well that don't require, uh, this, you know, sort of severe, you know, freezer, um, you know, uh, for you to have the severe, uh, capacity to, to keep it at, at a very, very cold temperature. And those might also be, uh, vaccines that would be available. And it would make it easier to have many different points of distribution.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, in closing, I, I, I have a motion with Supervisor Han, just for a report back. Um, I've had discussions with the smaller universities, and I know that we've made exceptions for our larger colleges to, um, allow sports to, 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 uh, be in play. But we have not aligned with the state as it relates to, um, higher education protocols. And so I would just ask that next week, um, that you, um, report back, uh, or Supervisor Han and I would ask that you report back in one week on the Los Angeles County health order and school protocol changes required to align with the state regarding institutes of higher education, including areas where alignment is not deemed recommended, and collaborate with the education sector representatives at the Economic Resiliency Task Force on any additional measures to ensure the safe return of university students to campus, recognizing that at our tier it is still outdoor. Um, so I would just ask, we would just ask that that be a report back for next week to be discussed. So
Madam Chair, may I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Um, so this motion, I think we saw it last night. Um, and there were two, um, sections to the report from Dr. Ferrer, which he didn't actually talk about today. So I think that's why it will have to come back as a report. Uh, but one of them was about, uh, relaxing our restrictions. And the other half had to do with a pilot for, uh, create, the creation of, you know, a quasi-bubble for students who would stay on campus. So I, I hope that, um, in the report back, we might know how it's going, for instance, at Wellesley, uh, so that we have some, you know, information to compare. And the other thing is, in your directive number one, it, it said to report back in a week on changes required to align with the state. Um, but it doesn't say that, uh, anything but telling us if we wanted to do this, how it would do it. Is that your intent?
Yes. I mean, I, I think, I guess, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I was just saying, the other thing is, it, you know, it hasn't gone so well in a number of campuses around the country. As you know, some had to shut back down again because, um, there were, there were sort of gatherings that were not part, uh, of the plan. But I certainly wouldn't be against a report back about what the protocols would look like. I, as you know, I'm very hesitant as the numbers go up to, you know, open things and open things and open things. But, uh, a report back, I think, is fine so long as the language of the report back doesn't take for granted that we're going to do this.
And, and I, and I agree. And I think that what I'm saying is, at the current tier, the state actually does allow to move forward. The only exception we've made is for sports. And every time I turn around, USC today reported that the women's basketball team has had an outbreak. And yet you've got, um, smaller campuses like, uh, I, I, I talked with Cal State, um, Pomona yesterday, or, uh, uh, Cal Poly Pomona yesterday, as well as, uh, University of Laverne, Cal Arts, who all have said that they, and actually by all of them, have all said that they have protocols in place and feel like they're being at a disadvantage. So I just wanted to report back on what alignment would look like. And that's why I put in, actually Supervisor Han and I put in the mo-, uh, language that says, um, required to align with the state regarding institutes prior, where alignment is not deemed recommended. And so I, I, I wanted, I want just to get a report back and see what that would look like.
Great. And I also think I would like to ask Dr. Ferrer to, to think carefully when this report back comes because just as I asked with other department heads, I would actually like to know whether you and your department recommend that we take these actions. Because many times you have said to us, well, you know, it's up to you supervisors. And, and we understand that. We'll make the decision. But I, it would help me very much if you said, given the current whatever, I think this is okay, or I think this is problematic. And that would be in the report back.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, Dr. Ferrer. Thank you, Dr. Gally. Um, and to be continued next week. We are now going to move on to item number three. Oh, do we, we have to vote on S1?
Yes. Did you, did you want to mo-, make that motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I know we've got a big agenda and, and it's at 12:15, so I was trying to move things forward. Um, item S1 is before us. I will move it, seconded by Supervisor Han. Uh, Madam Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Okay. Um, Supervisor Barker and Supervisor Han's motion to report back to align with the state regarding institutes of higher education is before us. Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kiel?
Aye.
Supervisor Kiel, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Now we're going to go on to item number three, exploring schools as COVID-19 vaccine, vaccine distribution sites. That was held by the Honorable Supervisor Janet Stone.
Thank you, Honorable Catherine Barker. Um, I talked a little bit about this in this last item, but I think, still think it's worth saying, um, in September, I authored a motion that directed our Department of Public Health to prepare a plan to distribute the COVID-19 vaccine once safe to do so. Um, DPH has since released that plan, which describes the logistics of distribution, um, and the need to develop a strong public health message that encourages all residents to get vaccinated. The motion also asks Department of Public Health to start putting together a list of locations that could potentially serve as COVID-19 vaccination sites, once more vaccine is available to the general public. I had a long talk with LAUSD Superintendent Austin Butner, who brought forth the suggestion that we partner with schools to serve as vaccine distribution sites. Uh, DPH's plan didn't mention using schools as vaccination sites, so that's why I'm bringing this motion forward. And I'm asking our department to explore the feasibility of using schools when the time comes. I remember, I'm old enough, uh, to remember, not everybody is, uh, that I received my little polio, uh, vaccine on a sugar cube in my elementary school, uh, in Inglewood, California. Uh, it was convenient. My parents apparently trusted it, and they trusted the school to deliver the vaccine. And I do think, um, that there might be criticism sometimes about our schools, but I do think overall, uh, families trust their school, uh, their individual schools, their individual school campuses. And I think schools are uniquely equipped to stay in touch with their families, particularly if they need a second dose. Um, and this makes sense. Although I do know the federal government doesn't anticipate vaccination for children to start until phase three of this COVID-19 vaccination plan. I think it's critical that we get plans in place with our schools and other trusted community partners. So this won't be like administering our annual flu vaccine where you can get it from any pharmacy, superstore like Costco, your workplace, your doctor. Um, while the immunization will eventually make it to those places, we're going to be faced with one of the largest vaccination efforts ever, and we need to be ready. Thank you, Dr. Ferrer. Thank you for your team for moving so quickly to get LA County prepared for this effort. And I want to say thanks to, uh, um, Superintendent Butner, Superintendent Escala, and, uh, my Public Health Commissioner, Lauren Nacano, for calling in to support this motion. I look forward to seeing how we can actually make this happen. Thank you, Madam Chair. The honorable chair. Not for much longer, though.
What, not honorable or chair? Um, Supervisor Soli?
That's funny.
Supervisor Solis.
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, uh, Supervisor Han, for bringing this forward. It's really timely. And I just want to re-, reiterate that it is important that we look at equity. And I do believe that the schools are trusted places to be able to distribute the vaccine once we get it, especially amongst immigrant families. That's probably one of the safest places that parents really look to. They, they honor and, and support our faculty and teachers. So I think that's really critical. And then I will bring something forward later today to help expand on that. So I just want to thank you and know how critically important it is to make sure that everybody has access to the vaccine when it is available. And I hope that our incoming President-elect, Joe Biden, does make it free and available, especially to mostly impacted areas that have really suffered by loss of death, but also high proportions of people that have been impacted by the COVID-19. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no one else is requested to speak on this item. Item three is before us, moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Solis to approve this item. Madam Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item three is before you. Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kiel?
Aye.
Supervisor Kiel, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Very good. We are now going to move on to item number six, the 10th and final report and discussion with court-appointed jail monitor, Richard Green. Uh, is, is he on the line?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, uh, thank you for inviting me to report to the board on the status of the county's compliance as of June 30, 2020, with the terms of the county settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, uh, as reflected in my 10th report, which I submitted to the district court, uh, dated August 31st, uh, 2020. Um, my last reporting period encompasses a period from January 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2020, which is, of course, impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, which limited somewhat my access to the jails, to inmates, and to county personnel. Uh, it was also a period which saw a significant diversion of county resources in the jails to addressing the pandemic, uh, the suspension of programs and, and treatment. Um, but it also had, uh, the benefit, and I use that term in quotes, of, of lowering the inmate population. We saw a reduction from 17,000 inmates to, uh, 12,000 inmates over the first four months of the pandemic, uh, which I think will have some potential for, uh, addressing some of the problems, uh, that I'm going to talk about in my report. Um, the county, uh, has achieved, uh, substantial compliance with 38 out of the 69 provisions that were subject to monitoring, and partial compliance with 19 provisions. Uh, 33 of those provisions are no longer subject to monitoring under the terms of the settlement agreement, and eight of the provisions are no longer subject to monitoring at some of the jail facilities. Um, there are five provisions for which the county remained in non-compliance as of June 30th, 2020. Uh, paragraph 47 concerns staffing. Uh, for some reasons which I, I really don't quite understand, uh, the county has simply not been able to assess whether staffing was a significant factor in address, in the critical incidents that occurred, um, such as, uh, deaths, or such as particular uses of force. Um, and I'm, I'm really not quite sure why the county has not been able to achieve compliance with that. And I would anticipate, uh, that they will be able to do that in the near future. Uh, paragraph 63, uh, required sufficient, uh, beds for, uh, inmates with, uh, mental illnesses in the high observation housing units, which are called HOH units, and the medium observation housing units, which are called MOH units. Um, it's been a chronic problem in the high observation housing units, the, which houses the inmates with the most, uh, severe, uh, mental illnesses. Um, this is one that may be addressed in the future, uh, post-pandemic, once, uh, the county is able to, um, free up space that is, has to be allocated to addressing the pandemic problems. Uh, if the, uh, jail population remains at the target of 12,000, uh, inmates set by the board, um, you, you basically would be going from facilities that have housed 17,000 inmates to facilities that have housed 12,000 inmates. And even if the percentage of those inmates is a higher percentage of inmates with mental illness, it still should free up space and resources, uh, that would enable the county to have sufficient, um, beds for high observation housing inmates. Um, I, I say this with the caveat that if men's central jail is torn down, something that I certainly favor, um, but not replaced, uh, with something, uh, that would potentially limit the space available for, uh, inmates with, uh, mental illnesses. Um, the other three provisions, uh, provision 66, provision 79, and provision 80 are all related. Um, they involve providing clinically, clinically appropriate treatment for HOH and MOH inmates, uh, programming and visits for those inmates, out-of-cell time, and structured programming for those inmates. Um, and this has been a chronic problem, uh, for the county, uh, to address. Um, it's about, uh, a lack of, uh, sufficient, uh, resources, clinicians, um, and, and, uh, lack of space, um, and, and just simply, uh, an inability to, um, provide the structured, uh, programming and treatment that's required. Um, and there's also been, uh, a, a lack of, a concern regarding the reliability of some of the documentation that was provided in, uh, this area. Um, it's really the only area that I've, we've had concerns about the documentation that has been provided, um, by the department. Um, as I said, this is really going to be that most significant challenge going forward. Um, the county just simply has not been able to demonstrate a significant percentage of mentally ill na-, illness inmates are receiving the appropriate treatment and programming. Um, and the, the documentation out of cell time is not reliable. Um, so I, my, my recommendations here are, there are additional C, uh, county health services resources, um, additional specialized units, uh, like the living modules and the step-down units, uh, that have been very successful, these programs in the jails, um, successful, these programs in the jails. I have talked to county health officials and deputy sheriffs. They all believe that these units can be expanded to address the needs of additional mentally ill inmates, and they have had success in getting inmates from very severe mental illnesses to get those things under control. Briefly, other challenging provisions. Paragraph 34 concerns release planning. This was the subject of a lawsuit that was filed, or intervention filed by inmates seeking to intervene in the lawsuit. And the result of that was a settlement that greatly expanded the release planning provisions in the settlement agreement. These more detailed provisions became effective on January 1, 2020, but they've been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, which has affected the resources that can be available to release planning, the sites that are available for release planning, the amount of time you can devote to release planning in the jails. This, I had always anticipated was going to take some time for the county to get into compliance because of the detailed provisions in the paragraph 34. I think, given the pandemic, it's just going to take that much longer for the county to get into compliance. They've also had some problems, repeat problems in paragraph 34, which required alerts in the electronic medical records for hoarding. They just have not been able to really get their arms around the hoarding problem, hoarding a medication problem in the jails. And then finally, paragraph 43, they still have not come up, at least as of June 30, they have not come up with a policy for the discipline of mentally ill inmates. And this is five years after the effective date of the agreement, they still did not have a policy. There have been, there's no lack of progress in many other areas. The training of deputies in use of force, ethics and professionalism, dealing with mentally ill inmates has taken place substantially. All of the deputies and custody assistants have been trained, and we're now simply in a stage of refresher training that is required every year or every other year. But all of the training required in the DOJ agreement has been, initial training has been achieved. The impact process has been substantially improved. Inmates, the identification of inmates with mentally ill inmates, expediting them through booking, getting them seen by clinicians, all of that has been significantly improved over the years. The facilities have significantly improved. They've installed barriers to prevent inmates from jumping off of second tiers and committing suicide, which was a significant problem. Suicide kits are available at every deputy station. Housekeeping, maintenance, custody control, and personal care have all significantly improved. With one slight caveat, those tend to be, facilities tend to be very clean when visits were announced and the department got through all of those provisions in the first or second year of the monitoring. But those are the kinds of things that can slip back a little bit if the department and county itself don't vigorously monitor that. They've done a very good job, or a much better job, of identifying inmates with suicidal ideation, potentially suicidal, and following up with those inmates, isolating those inmates, observing those inmates, and getting those inmates treatment. They've developed a quality improvement plan. It still needs some work in terms of evaluating aggregate data in particular areas and using it to develop corrective action plans. They've put a lot of effort into that and they've shown, I think, substantial progress. There's, the use of clinical restraints is significantly down over the years, and that's been, that's been a big improvement. Reviews by management in custody and health services and medical suicides and serious self-directed violence by mentally ill inmates has significantly improved over the years. Cameras in all of the jails, that has been the single most effective tool used to reduce the level of force used by deputies and increase the reporting of force used in the jails. It's in almost all of the common areas. Recently, or when I say recently, probably within a year ago or so, I identified some additional areas in Sallyports and Men Central that needed cameras that are supposed to be installed. But by and large, the cameras are in the common areas in all of the facilities, and it has had a significant impact on the use of force in the jails. Indeed, as a result, I have been able to resolve in my own mind whether a force was in policy or not in policy in all but a handful of forced cases. As I said, there was one troublesome case in the Sallyport, which caused me to recommend additional cameras in those Sallyports, and the department has indicated that they are going to install them there. One other area, the department, the provision 81 incorporates almost all of the provisions of the ROSA settlement agreement into the DOJ agreement for the facilities in the north, that is the Pitches Detention Facilities, MCCF, and also in the women's facility at Century Regional Detention Facility, CRDI. So that, and I've broken those hundredsome provisions out into several different categories. Training, the department has achieved substantial compliance with the training provisions of the ROSA agreement. They have achieved partial compliance with the use of force provisions. Comment that I have made, and that the monitors in the ROSA case have made, is that the deputy still too often resort to use punches to the face, and it just simply, it's something that needs to be stressed. The actual policy limits those uses to very serious threats of violence, you know, where self-defense has to be punched to the face, because they're very rare situations. And indeed, the most troublesome cases I've ever seen involve unprovoked punches to the face, but that's rare. But generally punches to the face resulting in a response to an inmate who is recalcitrant, but not an imminent threat should not be used. Another category of reporting and investigations of force, the department's in partial compliance with that. My big concern there is the commanders don't reference the actual policies in their review of use of force, and so they're sort of giving an overall feel to whether the force is in policy or not without really looking at the language of the policy itself. Grievances, although grievances are only partially compliance, I give high marks to the department for its effort to address the issue of inmate grievance business. It is a very challenging problem. There are thousands of grievances. They made tremendous progress under the leadership of a former inmate grievance coordinator. They developed, were able to get this all computerized. They educated the teams at the facilities. They generated detailed reports to management. I really was very impressed with the progress they've made in this area. Initially, when I went to some of the facilities and I talked to the teams that then assigned to inmate grievances, they just couldn't tell me how many grievances they had, what they were in terms of the investigation. And at the end of my tenure as monitor, those teams were on top of what was going on in the facility, so I give them high marks for that. Management and administration, I found them to be in substantial compliance. The use of security restraints, which was pretty limited, I gave no high marks for security, substantial compliance for security restraints, and substantial compliance for the development of an early warning system. My overall general recommendations are to increase CHS clinician resources, expand the living modules in the step-down units, and continue to divert nonviolent inmates with or without mental illnesses or not accused of serious or violent crimes away from the jails and finding greater treatment for inmates with, nonviolent inmates with mental illnesses into the community. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you want to have.
Thank you. I have a few questions, and I know Supervisor Kiel does as well. First of all, I want to thank you for the report. Several times in this report, though, I'm hearing you draw attention to issues with the design of our current facilities, and I think we're all united in the fact that Men Central Jail is not fit for, quite frankly, anybody and is in need to be torn down. But I heard you stop short in terms of long-term recommendation as it relates to especially those dealing with mental illness. What is your thought as it relates to the long-term plans if Men Central is torn down and we don't have something in place there for those that are most vulnerable?
Well, I mean, you have, you obviously have inmates who, with mental illnesses, who are nonviolent, and the county is already moving towards trying to divert them out of the jails while they're pending trial, and that's obviously one of my recommendations. But you are always going to be left with a population of mentally ill inmates who have violent histories, who are charged with violent crimes, who are unpredictable and dangerous, and they are going to, they're going to be in the jails while they are mentally ill and they're going to have to have treatment. If you demolish Men Central Jail, which is something that I favor, you've got a lot of inmates in Men Central Jail who are going to have to be transferred over to towers, or if you find a different place to house the women, maybe over to the Century Regional Detention Facility, but I think you're going to still need to find some place that you can provide treatment to inmates with mental illness who cannot be let out on bond pending their trials. So I favor some additional facility where Men Central Jail is for the housing of mentally ill inmates with violent histories or charged with violent crimes, where they can be, where it can be designed in a way that can minimize the movement that's required in order to then enhance the ability of clinicians to safely provide them with visits and programming and treatment that they need.
So I appreciate that response because I, and so without that, do you think that we can realistically gain full compliance with settlement agreement without the replacement of some sort of mental health treatment facility?
Well, you know, if Men Central Jail is still there, so you have these facilities that formerly housed 17,000 inmates and now house 12,000 inmates. I think you ought to have enough space to be able to, to provide beds for the HOH inmates, to enhance the living modules and the step-down units. So I think you have the space right now with only 12,000 inmates. If on the other hand, the inmate population goes back up to what it was before, and undoubtedly you'll still have an increase in your mental health, mentally ill inmate population, then I think it'd be very difficult. Similarly, if a decision was made in the near future to tear down Men Central, then all of a sudden you now start having space concerns for 12,000 inmates that are left.
But in regard, and just kind of piggyback on that, with the high-observation housing, do you believe that we can accomplish this in our current space? Because what I'm hearing from you is that there are serious concerns about the existing space that we have to address both moderate and high observation.
Well, up until the pandemic, there were never enough beds for all of the HOH inmates in the, I mean, there were beds obviously in the jails, but there were not enough beds in the HOH units for all of the HOH inmates. And that obviously had an impact on the ability to provide treatment and programming to those inmates. It wasn't as much of a problem for what I described as the MLH inmates, but it was a significant problem for the HOH inmates, and it went for the entire five-year period of time. There was never enough space in the HOH units for the HOH inmates. I, I don't have the same information now. I mean, I know that as of June 30, there still was not enough space in the HOH, HOH units for the HOH inmates, even though there had been the reduction in the jail population. So I think that if they, if there are only 12,000 inmates, and I don't want to use the term only in quotes, and they take a hard look at where they might be able to house the HOH inmates and provide them with the necessary treatment, they may be able to do it, but if the jail population goes up again, I have my doubts.
All right. And then I've got two more questions, but concerning our limits to the therapeutic care, we know that we are currently housing our mentally ill inmates, and it does not easily allow for therapy and treatment space. What kind of space would be needed in order to reconcile those issues here and now? Or can it be done? I mean, I think that's the frustration is, is that are we, I know staffing, you mentioned staffing being a challenge and staffing needs, and that kind of is, my second question is, are we talking one-on-one staffing for our most acute inmates? But I mean, I think that in the immediate, real time, what can we do to address that issue?
Well, I think, I do think there has, at least I have been told by the county's reports, that they just have not had enough clinicians to provide the, by individual visits when required or to provide the group programming. Now, a lot of this has gotten suspended because of the pandemic, but it had been an issue for several reporting periods, that they lacked the sufficient clinician staff to provide the resources, that they lacked the sufficient HOH space to provide the programming for all of the HOH inmates, and that they really did not have a program in place to figure out how they were going to provide. figure out how they were going to provide the clinically appropriate treatment that was required.
Okay. In terms of the, you talk about where we're not noncompliant on very critical provisions and therefore at risk of failing to provide constitutionally required care for at least the last five years. How much longer do you anticipate we will be in this position with the DOJ? Or, I mean, I know it's asking you with a crystal ball, but based on what you're seeing, because it sounds like we've made some steps forward, but we also have a ways to go in other areas.
Before the pandemic, I would have said two years, but I would now say probably three years at least. It's just, it's going to take a while to be able to come into compliance with, I think, the most challenging provisions in the settlement area.
Okay. Well, I know Supervisor Kuhl has some questions, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your extensive service to the county. Not only in this capacity as our court-appointed jail monitor, but also your counsel and implementation work with the county's CCJV efforts. Your wealth of knowledge will surely be missed, and we are grateful for the opportunity to have you on our team. This report, and this is why I wanted on the agenda, certainly highlights a need for both short-term, but I believe long-term solutions in order to gain full compliance with a settlement agreement, and even beyond the settlement agreement, to be in a place where we are providing proper supportive rehabilitated care to those individuals that may not be suited to be out in the community but need services in order within confinement. And so I really do believe that long-term is something that we need to look at. But again, I just want to thank you for your service and for everything that you've done on behalf of the residents of LA County. So with that, Supervisor Kuhl?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to echo what you just said. Mr. Druyan, over the last five years, you have been extraordinary really in helping us to understand where we comply, but also where we fall down as a county. But as you probably know, having been involved with us over the last five years, we have begun to make some very significant shifts away from providing care only in the jail setting. And I know you said at least three times at the end of your remarks, there are people who would do better away from the jails. You talked about, you didn't use the word diversion, but that's what we're, you know, calling it, that it helps to cut down the population to those who are most seriously in need of the highest security and highest observation. In the meantime, we have taken a number of steps to really change in a profound way the way we are dealing with our jail population. An enormous report called Alternatives to Incarceration, a measure passed by the voters that indicated they wanted more services in the communities, all things that I think dovetail with what you said about who might appropriately not be to be in the jail. At the same time, we've adopted, as you know, and as my colleagues know, some pretty significant